And then the payroll.
We so we could, yeah, we got.
I mean, I hope that we don't have to use them. I'm just prepared in case.
Right, and that's kind of, and I want to jolly in the loop over it because again, I can, I can, I can do this, but I just want to jog in the way, I want to jog wherever I'm managing cash as close as possible. I didn't want to set the county up for any kind of problems down the road. I didn't want to walk across the street to the bank. But I wanted to have the ability to hear acknowledge that we may borrow a particular amount of dollars to get us a little bit more. However, these things.
So then, as your question, no other.
I, I was just wondering if it would be, I don't know, just.
That you prefer to do.
I would, I would.
I don't like the idea of borrowing money out of education debt service.
That's what's a concern for me. I'd rather than be able to have that money and us.
Sure, good, good point, yes, Jim.
Uh, I, Mr. Chair, I was, uh, this is always really something that I don't like. They're not exactly saying, oh, yeah, come on, let me just go ahead and give you that money. Basically, we're just taking our little hand and then we're just getting that money out. We're using it as our own personal.
Right.
I don't know, what is that fast hat?
You select one.
A fast hat, the payday loan kind of thing, and I just, I just kind of don't have that.
We all.
I just like what that fact that hundred thousand dollars is, that where things happen sometimes that are unforeseen. Or maybe you didn't know because I know all of that eight hundred, eight hundred thousand that we're going to have to pay back. That was something I knew that was wrong. I tried to tell them, this is not right, but that's neither here nor there. The thing is, we're basically taking our hand and putting it in the school's money, and I don't think it's right. How much will it cost? How can we do something different? That's what I would like to know.
I could, the only thing I can do is I can tell you that we will pay interest on.
That's what we will.
On, on the bank action. Uh, and I tell you, I've run the numbers, I've had several people run the numbers. I mean, we are, I mean, if I was, again, I tell you, if I'm flying in a plane, I'm concerned. But if, but again, this is money and we can figure it out.
That's, that's just the thing. That's the only advantage to taking the money out of education debt service fund is we do not incur interest. If we go through a bank, I know that's, that's money, one, we haven't budgeted, and two, that's probably a tax payer's fault.
Seeing that you realize also if everybody is dying, dead or.
Go ahead, Jim.
Well, I think, I mean, if, if all the departments are diligent and they're spending and watch what they do, amellet services, they come along the way and they show up here depending. Okay, as long as you can show diligence and watch what you do, we can do it without them. There, there is a good chance, but if we do not take the referendum and something does happen before we don't, they can't do it overnight. It takes days for them to get back and say, yes, you can. You, you've got to have something to catch you just in case there's a problem.
I, I, I want to answer and kind of wrap that up, but I hate it, I don't like it, I, I want to end it, I hope we don't have to use it, but at the same time, if I had to choose between putting twenty thousand dollars in interest and opening up the VSO, I'm going to choose this.
And okay.
I understand what everybody's saying. We just started out with a million dollars you were borrowing.
Million one.
Million one, and we're talking now about six hundred thousand dollars, yes.
If, or less.
It's out of school debt service, if, it comes. I don't like it either. But this is if we need it. So we're going from one point one million borrowing to six hundred thousand if we need it.
That's a five hundred thousand dollar swing.
Really a one point one if we don't need it.
Right, see.
But I mean, that's kind of the way I'm looking at it.
And I applaud the hard work of the amellet service, and that's what I did just.
Well, well, some ways is a good shape, but I just.
Oh, I didn't have one, but I get a lot of money.
If I have F Y.
It is. No, you don't.
Well, y'all has the budget.
Budget gets approved. All right, the next item we have on here, number ten, is approved appropriations for F Y nineteen twenty.
See, we talked about things last day.
Well, I think. The next item I have is the appropriations for F Y nineteen twenty, and then, you know, since the last meeting, we worked. Mr. Pickman, the office has worked hard to give y'all something to review. It is a proposal. I appreciate all the hard work of the budget committee. I think the budget committee has really worked countless hours, and I know that there's a lot of energy and this is tough business, but the process is appropriations, and then we look at the setting the tax rate. We should have that in the package, tax rate.
Yes, sir. I think it would be a good idea that everybody took all these that's on the table here and take them home, look at it for a couple of weeks, and then they can come back.
I agree with that. Can I connect?
Yes, sir.
Would you consider tonight, looking at the ones we can agree on? Because there's several, I'm sure, that we all agree on, and we just literally get them out of play.
Do you think the rank, the agreement?
Well, I'm saying like a budget, for example, trustee, I mean, and I'll use her for an example. Anything that I've looked at, I don't disagree with anything on it. So, I mean, that's something I think, not a place for anybody else, but I mean, we would not, if I say trustee.
We have, we've never broken apart before. Broke it, that's what he changed. Broke it, yeah, broke it out by the part.
Well, I, I've watched some other committees, and they do that, and the end of it, what they do is they make a motion to consolidate the budget where you can vote on all of it at the same time.
Well, I tell you, you know, since you said that, uh, and I've had a, I've had the good fortune of looking at the. The last week, I'm making, I'm making a motion to propose upon the budget proposal brought on in the House.
And I go through.
Let me just make.
This is table.
It's a board right here.
Well, that's why I want everybody to.
Shouldn't vote on the table, they're coming around. Come on, let's. Yeah, I'll take the. Go ahead, Ron.
If, if I could, yes, I, I'd just sit down and work on the page, and then I'll say, we want to call it made, when he presented the information, showed it, and I said, use information the rest of me. This is somebody wrote in the habits, I'll talk with no one, only first autograph of Webster, Diana, for her to be able to say, and we, after I did my work on site. I went to her office and we sat in there for, I don't know, eight of the average, blah, 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 to explain the, or correct the, or give the information I was looking for. Beyond that, there's been no one of which had input on this. I did put it forward as a budget, I put it forward as a framework, or ten heads put together. Because ten heads is very annoying. And ideas and things that y'all have over there, and you can make this thing, if it's a framework you want to work with, a thousand percent better than what's set here. There's just a framework. And, and I tried to identify in a logical way, and I'm trying to, footnotes, to try to guide you going through this, and where my mind was and my thinking was, on the changes that I put in there. Underlying, from my perspective, it was just common sense, looking at prior years, known factors that I was aware of. That Jim Bush had shared, or presented, that Gordon had his information he shared with us, of the budget committee years, and people thinking comments, and my partner Hicks committed the form. And I'll just use that as, as my example, coincidentally, we both sat in the same table, and safety between me and Mayor Bush had put together for Tennessee rich nation come out. He told me exactly what he said, with exception, now, he also mentioned his insurance too. I may know to both of them, but the one of his poll workers, that it had to be the fourteen five, because that's a fixed cost, it wasn't variable, because they were, I made this, this, and that, and so forth. If you look in your direction, you see the numbers fourteen five. Again, you know, those are the kinds of things I try my best to make it work as closely as possible, of being real numbers, as opposed to hide the sky. So, if, I, I'll be glad to start to go through the budgets you want, targets you want to, where you don't understand anything, or you ask me any questions for you to build on, plus to come over the page. Again, to me, it's the framework to go on. Never intended to be anything other than that, because like I said, ten heads is very annoying, and I invited everybody to share your thoughts, questions, and push me what you want to do with it. While we're around the table tonight, and again, I know it's, well, fifteen after seven, but our time's running out, it's past ten thirty. To me, we want to do some rough input into this thing tonight, and then you can fine tune it if you want to, for a further discussion type of deal. I will actually, I do agree. But I, I just feel like you need to understand that this is your framework, or if not, that you are, you just framework. First, be able to say, hey, from this.
The best thing to, I'm, we're drawing our motion, but the best thing to, how many seen this before tonight?
I'd say about four or five.
Well, everybody.
So I mean, you know.
Let, let it. Well, see, I'm sorry.
She, she had.
She didn't get back until.
Okay, so that did say.
I don't always need to go to town, I'm a.
With that, with that being said, this table is, everybody look at this. You want to come back in one week or two?
No, that's too long. We need to go.
One week.
We should go through it and we stop.
If she has not seen.
She's not required to make a decision, but we can talk about it at least, and we can, we can talk about it.
Well, if, how do I, you don't make a.
We don't have to make a decision.
No, that is what I'm saying. How do you know if people have any questions?
We can talk about it. We can listen.
Do you want to, as audit committee chair, do you have anything to say? Yeah, go ahead.
What I proposed on July thirteen was the exact same thing in essence, that we, which was just a, an idea to get something started. It was never intended to be a budget that we voted on and all that, and it got turned in all, into all that, all over Facebook, everywhere else, but, you know, that's fine, I, I really don't. If, if I worried about that, I'd be worried about it all the time, but anyway, I would like to see us at least go over some of this tonight, and I know Karen hadn't seen it, but.
I'd like to say, I'm concerned about the school's budget. We need to at least approve a lot of your budgets and make it have time to go back and work on it. And have two weeks to, to work on, say, schools, or please come back in two weeks with your budget, whether you give it or not approving. So I don't think we can just, uh, leave tonight and want a lot of them to know whether or not your budget is true. So, I, I just don't think we can just table it and not let them know one way or another, uh, if your budget is approved.
I know we've been, that, that, how many years have they been denying the vote? That they got seen, or they, they sent, they submitted, how many, is that the first year? I talked to Ben Rodger about this, and I was, I was wondering what the steps were about them, you know, they're at a certain point, they get a three percent automatic raise, kind of thing. But the way he explained that to me was, is if we give them growth money, then that three years, I mean, as long as we're giving them growth money, they, even though they may say, hey, I don't like it, they have to deal with it. So if you give them sixty nine cents, you give them growth money. So you can literally raise their property, or their untended, uh, amount allocated by a hack of a cent, and solve that problem.
What, what is the bottom number we're looking at?
Well, we've got that information intact, and it's there.
Sixty eight and a half.
That's pretty, pretty straightforward, the information that passed, I think, I'm talking to, um, Dersky, Mary Anderson, who is the educational person, a couple times on the phone, and she, she was very enlightening, and kept referring to white lines. On my number, so I know my number is a while, because she gave me the, the, the. But once again, I apologize, but we're jumping all over the place.
You don't go.
And it's really difficult.
But you think you have a good point.
Yes, you do, but, but did you all line it the same and say, this book, or they would not do, and move or not move, not to, because can't keep going in circles.
Eighteen nineteen, I'm stroking here for just a moment. Eighteen nineteen, County Commission approves sixty eight half cents for fun, nineteen twelve. Just saying your budget.
I'm going to take.
I, thirty five, page thirty five and this. The County Commission approves sixty eight half cents right here.
Because it equals eight.
So. We're not going to get any of what it equals. The County Commission approves sixty eight half cents. School Board said, no, we won't. Seventy, seventy five, I think it was already. And the commission approved permission, permission, not funded, Mr. Curtis, to take the difference out of his reserve and spend. So the county is only funding sixty eight half cents right here, and that's what we're required to fund this year's sixty eight half cents.
Well, to be separate from that, just put your hands in this piece paper here. Keep telling me, this is, that's, you should come up. Just keep going.
General Federal School proposal.
All right, y'all go ahead.
It's, it's also alluded to, the sixty eight half cents is what's been in play, and that dictates about a property tax calculation that would be produced. Which we know, actually, these are the actual numbers as of six thirty, the dollar amount, that the six point eight five produced property tax was a million, seven hundred eighty four thousand, four hundred forty nine dollars and eight cents. Prior year taxes is fifty one, four ninety two, twenty one, that was collected by the trustee's office. T D A does the utility sharing at the state, state then distributes it out, County County received three hundred ninety eight thousand, four hundred four dollars and seventeen cents. Then the local optional sales tax portion of the school received is seven hundred sixty seven dollars, two hundred, I'm sorry, seven hundred sixty seven thousand dollars, two hundred sixteen dollars and fifty four cents, for a total of three million, uh, one thousand five hundred ninety eight dollars. I would, I would ask you to turn to the second sheet, because that's actual state numbers for County County. Uh, this was given to us when we went down there to, 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 to the county board for the education, people came in and speak to us. You notice there on their column for the eighteen nineteen year, if you run down through there, those are your individual line items of revenue that the state uses to derive the funding that County County has to pay, comes from those sources. And I did not include all of them on this numbers I just read, I just read the big numbers. As you can see, there's other things included, bake ass excise tax, interstate telecommunications tax, uh, marriage license, uh, et cetera. Those are small numbers, I didn't even include them in there, as far as what actual numbers were paid to the school system as of six thirty nineteen. So in essence, the school received well over three million dollars from this county for the school year just ended, just ended. If you look down through there, the state says, okay, based upon the calculation, and they do prove, what is B E P, basic education program, and the M O E, maintenance of effort. They calculate to determine the B E P based upon the number of students you have, that determines the amount of money the state has to contribute to fund the education of the children in County County. They fund teachers, they fund, uh, educational material, books, all the other things that goes into funding kids, which works out to be a substantial higher amount, nothing between seventy to eighty something cents, uh, percent. Of school's budget, uh, comes from the state, as long as you've met their criteria of the head counts. Number of teachers they say you should have, number of supervisors, number of principals, number of nurses, all those kind of things. They got a template they lay over the county, based upon the number of students you have. Well, County County spends significantly more than that amount, which is a dollar for a dollar against property tax owners in Tennessee. Because once you go above those template numbers the state hangs on you, the county has to pick up and fund it up instead, they don't help it anyway, okay? And I just use one example, or number for factual, this came from Mr. Curtis. He's identified, and as of, this was several months ago, there was forty four teachers being paid over the month, what the state says is needed. I would say four, they did. Now, granted, Mr. Curtis is correct, you can't have kids in a room without a teacher. So yes, the teachers are required, from a standpoint of having a teacher in the room in County County, but the state is saying, based on the number of students you have, then you're maintaining something that we're not asking you to do, therefore, we don't help with funding that those teachers hours, et cetera, et cetera. So you take a teacher's salary, which minimum now interests thirty five thousand dollars, plus benefits, and you can see, when you start about forty plus teachers, you're talking about a substantial dollar now, that we're paying property tax on a hundred percent. Only saying that is to say, the, the state says for eighteen nineteen year, two million, eight hundred seventy five dollars and a hundred and nine dollars is what County County got to pay. What that is on this page is maintenance of effort, and the reason why it's so maintenance of effort is, and not B E P, is because, if you turn back to your first page, and look at the bottom. At the bottom, when I spoke in July twenty fourth, it's Mary Ed Dersky, executive director of office of the Department of Finance. Based on the number of students in County County, which they used was one thousand eight hundred eighty one, which was a little higher than eighteen ninety, it was the prior year, if you remember back. When Senator Poe was here, he said County County is going to be receiving additional three hundred seventy nine thousand dollars of B E P money. Well, that is correct, but she corrected me and said, well, right, that's nothing special, that's what the state required to do because of your increasing enrollment, okay? So, we don't get three hundred seventy nine thousand more on the B E P calculation, which is what the state only uses, that's it. They don't use maintenance of effort, it's B E P from the state, but as a result of our contribution to sixty eight half cent property tax, and all of these other taxes identified on here that's produced more income over the years, the school has picked up those higher numbers and put them in the budget, which means our M O E maintenance of effort has been increasing on us. Because the state uses the school's budget, not actual numbers, school's budget, to determine what the county has to contribute. So, she said, confirm, you got to put it into greater of B E P or M O E. M O E, we're up to two million, eight hundred seventy five dollars and a hundred, a hundred and seven dollars, and that's the minimum we have to do for next year. Unless, if the school budget goes in and we don't see it, and these figures, we keep the sixty eight half cents exactly where it is, but these numbers on all these other taxes is brought up what they were as of six thirty, then that M O E is going up. So we'll have to increase and pay more next year because M O Es will be higher.
So we are giving them.
More.
Or giving them, um, what would be called, um, growth money.
Well, all I know is this, we've, we've been pointed to in the queues, a minimum fund to schools, we don't support schools, and that therefore, they can't achieve what they need to achieve with the money that they have. And that's why they quote unquote, don't accept what we are sixty eight half cents, they want to spend more, and therefore, and I don't know whether spending more or not, being quite blunt with you, don't ever see a budget filed on, nobody's spending. That's just a fact. But anyway, saying that is to say this. If we pass anything for a school budget, we better be identifying the line in the amount of money we're distributing, and so it equals two million, eight seventy five eleven. So next year, we know what we're obligating ourselves to, as opposed to states saying, oh, you want to pay higher because your M O E now is up to two point nine.
So you, you're saying the sixty eight half cents is enough?
Well, all I know is sixty eight and a half cents is providing the proper tax revenue amount, which is producing greater proper tax numbers than what the budget is showing. So sixty eight, sixty eight, and a half certainly is enough, because even if you look at two point eight, which is what we're required, we're already on three million dollars right now.
So we could back, go back.
If we kept the B E P in line, we'd be at two point four versus two point eight, so four hundred thousand dollars there is greater than what the state would require if we kept the M O E in line with the B E P. So we did.
They had a windfall of a hundred and twenty six thousand, four hundred and eighty seven thousand.
But anyway, that's, that, that, that's just the point I'm saying, when we don't have a school budget, and we don't, we do not have it enough, so heck. When Mr. Curtis presented it to the budget committee, you'll see the heading on there, it's just an estimate. If you remember comments that he made, we don't know where we're at, we don't know, these are just numbers, we think they're reasonable, yes, but that's just numbers. But we have no budget from the school system. So if you pass anything from the school system, you would need to identify a line item and then mount, so that we block ourselves in at least knowing what the obligation is. As opposed to getting caught next year with the M O E of a number that's substantially higher, because I just told you, and I did count all the funds, we're at three million already plus, right now.
Any other discussion this afternoon, school's.
Does that make sense to y'all? I mean, I tried to.
I mean, there's.
B E P.
B E P, M O E, hey, greater of, it's just a.
And so when local revenues, what I've been looking at and studying is, when the local revenues were increasing, our, our sales taxes and all of that, it's, it's all increasing. So we are way over the two million, eight hundred thousand, we're at three million, and I think it's even higher, uh, if we look at their quarterly report, it's even higher.
Yes, go ahead.
I here is a courtesy to Mr. Curtis and our school board, and so I've not been involved in this process, I really do appreciate, um, you having this research into this and talking to Mary Anderson, because that's who we talked to too. So I'm only going on the knowledge that I have, it was my understanding that the proposed budget that you have was the one that the school board approved in May, and that's what we're waiting on to be able to take any action through the school board. The government meeting next week, I proposed to the school board to put on the agenda budget, on whatever decision you made this evening. Of course, we're on a continuing budget, as you know, that's what governments do when, um, they don't have an approved budget, so I'm really just here as a person, I'm involved in the process.
I may be a little spot.
I'll just, I'll try to answer any questions if I can, or I will take the information that you have, um.
Well, I was under the assumption that they were asking for any.
Well, my, my assumption was, he didn't have the correct numbers, and he said this was a ballpark.
Think about this was ballpark.
It's right here.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I, was that like, sixty eight half cents.
Four hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, right there, not here.
So you're saying we, we might have a budget next week, by the way?
Well, what I'm saying is, this, this, this is, this is the budget that the board hasn't put, is my thing, so we need some of that. Whether you approve it or decline it, so that we can go back and get another budget. We can't take any action, because this is the budget that's been.
I, I don't think anybody's looking at eight thousand.
I make a motion to not approve this budget.
At eight thousand?
At eight thousand.
I will send that.
Do you, Lane, did you get that?
Just one second.
I don't know if that's a motion. We, we will have to.
So Jimmy's on it.